Go ahead and get started. We're down a couple of people and one may join, so he will join as after we begin. Are you ready? Okay. Well, hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is the Harrison Township Planning Commission meeting. Today is June 18th, 2025. May I have a call to order, please?
Member Baca. Member Byzanko, excuse. Member Duncan.
Here.
Member Devlin.
Here.
Member O'Parka.
Here.
Member Tommelo.
Here.
Chair Murray.
Present. Thank you. May I have approval of the agenda as presented, please?
Still moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have approval of our minutes from our May 15th, 2025 meeting? And please note any requested changes. We'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 15th, 2025 meeting.
I'll support.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first hearing this evening, please.
Did you want to go over how this will work?
No. Go ahead and read it. We'll dive right in.
All right. Case 15-25, RZ Emerald Green Properties LLC.
Two parcels, rezoning from R1C to RM1 for the future development of site plan condominiums. And with that, I will turn it over to our planner for full explanation. And then we'll let the applicant come up and then we will open the public hearing.
All right, planning commissioners. I'm pulling open just an aerial photo exhibit that highlights the two properties that are the subject of this rezoning request this evening. So Harrison Township has received an application from the property owner of these two properties, who is seeking or petitioning the township to rezone these two properties from their current zoning district designation of R1C, Single Family Residential District, to the RM1, Multiple Family Residential District. The properties, when combined, equal just under 20 acres in size. They are located south of Ashland Avenue, north of Metropolitan Parkway. The application form that was submitted by the property owner to seek the rezoning of the property indicates that if rezoned, the applicant intends to facilitate the site plan sketch that was included as part of your application materials. And that site plan sketch illustrates a proposed or potential single-family detached residential development totaling 88 units on this subject property. I did, before getting into the review, I did want to share with the planning commission that I indicated provided correspondence through the township to the applicant that in order to facilitate the development of a single-family detached residential subdivision or condominium, that a rezoning to the RM1, Multiple Family Residential District is not necessary. That can be done under the current R1C district zoning. There are additionally a couple of other development options, neither of which require a rezoning. There is a residential open space development option where single-family units could be clustered on maybe smaller properties for the sake of preserving larger open spaces on the property. There's also a planned unit development option. Again, that offers some flexibility potentially where there could be units clustered in a certain portion of the site with a greater percentage of the property preserved as open space. We did share that with the applicant, but the applicant wanted to proceed with this rezoning request nonetheless to the RM1 district. So just to give a little bit of a background, just for the sake of what the process looks like for a rezoning request. So the property owner has the right to seek and ask for a rezoning, a change to the zoning of their property. That's what they have done. They're seeking again the RM1 district. The planning commission, by law, is the one that would review and evaluate the rezoning request during a public hearing. State law requires notices to be published in the paper, notices to be sent to properties within 300 feet of the request. This evening is the public hearing. Public hearing is an opportunity for any interested citizens to express their views one way or the other with regard to this request. Once the public hearing is finished, the planning commission would normally then close the public hearing and then the planning commission would have an opportunity to do deliberation. Typically, there is not a dialogue during the public hearing, per se. The public would share their comments. The planning commission is kind of recording questions or comments and things and then, as needed, after the public hearing is closed, the planning commission may respond to things that were heard during the public hearing or have other deliberation. Ultimately, the planning commission would make a recommendation on whether the rezoning should be approved or denied, and that recommendation would go to the township board. So if the planning commission, after the public hearing is closed and after their own deliberation, makes that recommendation this evening, the next step would be that that request, the planning commission's recommendation would go to the township board at a subsequent township board meeting. Per state law, any rezoning requires approval by the township board. The planning commission may not make a decision tonight. You can ask for additional information or for certain reasons, you can delay your action and maybe you could take up and make a recommendation at a subsequent meeting. So that's the procedure. The multiple family residential zoning district, one of the things that we need to, you know very well, planning commission, that any rezoning request, if it is approved, even if they have indicated on their application form, as they did today, that the property would be used for a single-family residential development, we can't hold them to that. Ultimately, any of the allowable uses in that requested zoning district, if it's ultimately approved, could be sought. Any development would require additional meetings in front of the planning commission. It would require site plan review and approval, potentially special land use review and approval. So you're not approving a development, but a change in zoning means that that particular property owner or a future property owner could seek development under any of the options allowed by that new zoning district. So the principal permitted uses, just so you are aware, that are allowed within the RM district, RM1 district include: single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings, township facilities and parks. And then special land uses allowed within the RM1 district include bed and breakfast, convalescent homes, nursing homes, hospices, housing for the elderly, senior citizen housing, and places of worship. Those are the, that's the listing of potential uses that could be allowed in the future if this property is rezoned. I wanted to share for the benefit of the folks in the audience, particularly if this is maybe, if you're new to this process here, so what I've pulled up is taken from the Harrison Township zoning ordinance. These are the seven standards that the planning commission and tonight and ultimately the township board is charged with in order to help make a decision. So these standards include, is this request consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the township's master plan? The second standard, is this rezoning, is the site, is the physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features of this property compatible with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district? Number three, evidence that the applicant, the applicant needs to provide evidence that they cannot receive a reasonable return on investment through developing the property with one or more of the uses permitted under the current zoning. Again, that current zoning is R1C. The fourth criteria, the planning commission should consider the compatibility of all the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with the surrounding land uses and zoning in terms of land suitability, impacts on the environment, density, nature of use, traffic, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values. Fifth, the capacity of the township's utilities and services must be sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the requesting, requested district without compromising the health, safety, and welfare of the township. Sixth, the capability of the street system to safely and efficiently accommodate the expected traffic generated by the uses permitted in that requested zoning district. And then finally, the apparent demand, so there must be a demand for the types of uses permitted in the requested zoning district in relation to the amount of land in the township that might currently be zoned to accommodate that demand. So is there other zoning elsewhere in the township that's available to accommodate what's being requested? Is there a need for the rezoning? So we have prepared a review letter for your benefit, and we've provided findings of fact as it relates to these standards. And I think one of the biggest ones that I've shared with you already is the concern, in addition to some other maybe limitations from noncompliance with some of these standards, the concern that what they're asking for is not necessary for it. You don't need to rezone the property in order to achieve a single-family residential development, not necessarily to the density that they're asking or the number of units, but the current zoning district does allow for a single-family residential development. So with that said, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions for me at this time, I'd be glad to try and answer.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation, spot on as usual. Commissioners, any questions for the planner at this point? I know we will have more as the evening goes on.
I have a question.
Sorry. No, public hearing's not open yet.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. So let's go ahead and reiterate. So the process is that the planner has shared his information, our information, and the responsibilities of us as a board. Then we will listen to the applicant, and then we will open the public hearing. Okay. We will open the public hearing first and then we will allow the applicant to speak, and then we will allow the public to speak. And then we will close the public hearing. All the while, we'll be taking notes. The applicant will be taking notes, paying attention to everything that the public is questioning, stating. And then, once the public hearing is closed, the planning commission will then ask questions. There won't be a back-and-forth dialogue between the gallery and us. We will be taking refuse notes and paying attention to everything that everybody says. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and say this now, and I will say it again. We are going to ask you to please keep your comments kind and respectful. If, for those of you that came in late, please make sure that your cellphones are on mute. We ask that, that when someone is speaking, that the gallery remains quiet and respectful so that we can hear the comments that are made. And if something is stated, it doesn't need to be stated repeatedly, again, by multiple people because we will, we will have it. And so in the sense of time, once we've got it, we've got it. So anything, Adam, that I'm missing?
Time limit?
Oh, yes, thank you. Time limit, yes. The critical time limit. Everyone has three minutes or less. Well, hang on. Three minutes or less to speak, and once your three minutes is up, you're up because that's the rule. So I hope that you will live by that.
Shouldn't we hear from the applicant first?
We are going to hear from the applicant first.
Is that why you said we were not opening?
No, no, no. We're going to open the public hearing and then hear from the applicant, and then the public will be allowed to state your comments and ask your questions. So that's okay. That's all right. I know this process is new to a lot of you, so I just, I beg you to be, please be respectful and kind. That is, that is the common element for this evening. Okay. We're going to start out with, does anyone have any questions for the planner before we move forward? Mr. Young, is there anything further that needs to be stated before we move forward?
Nope.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Duncan?
I'll support.
Miss Devlin? All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Duncan, Devlin, the applicant? Would you please come up to the microphone, to the stand and the microphone, and please be clear with your comments? Hi. Can you tell us who you are and your address?
My name is Vincent Di Lorenzo. This is my son, the owner of the project. I will be speaking on behalf of the company.
Okay. Welcome.
Well, let me, before we go any further, talk about how we got here. This particular project has been thought about for many years, maybe about 30 years, off and on with different ideas. Originally, when we purchased the property, it was zone high-rise. We could build up to 10 stories. At the time, when we proposed a 10-story building, the township chose to rezone it to R1C without us even knowing about it. But we had other things to do, so we let it go at the time. Your planning commission has just adopted a new master plan. Your master plan was adopted on November 12th, 2024, and it's good for till 2040. In your master plan, you have chosen this property to go from R1C to RM1. This wasn't done by us. This was done by you. You decided, and here's your master plan. If you want, I can.
We all have a copy.
You have copies of it. So I want the people to know that it was their idea. So anyways, so we're complying to the master plan that you have already approved by going from R1C to RM1. That's what you indicated. Now, in the meetings that we had with your supervisor, it was decided to go to a lesser density than was approved by your master plan. And we decided to go into single-family housing. We are building this particular project in Shelby Township, and we showed it to the supervisor, and he kind of agreed that that would be a good thing for the community. These homes will be going for around 500,000 plus, and we're going to show them, and we added a sketch of it in our proposal. So instead of going with multiple and attached, we are submitting a plan to put these up. These will be 2,200 square foot of single-family homes. They're very pretty, and they will add to the community. And they would not be attached. And so that was one of the things we discussed, and everybody sort of agreed that this would be a good idea. But if the township does not want it, we're willing to do attached. We have sketches for those, but that would increase the density from 88 units to 148 units. And we've decided to go with the lesser density. So we're asking now for rezoning, so to comply with the directions of the master plan and to go forward with the single-family development. We have already done our wetland determination. DEQ has gone on site. They have given us the dimensions. We're able to do this project without touching any wetlands. We will be leaving the center of the project untouched, which would be about six acres. Will always be left wild. So, but again, if there's any adjustments in that, we can deal with it when we come back for site plan, if the zoning is approved. Because apparently, even though, if you look at the sketches that are in front of you, you will see that the center of the property will be left in its current state. So there will be about a good six acres, between five and six acres. They will not be touched. It will be left in its current state for the birds and wildlife and whatever to exist. So we will be building around it. That is one of the things we'll be solving. The second thing we'll be solving, if you look at the sketch, the Ashland has never been dedicated. Reason is that when the Riverbend subdivision was put in, the developer of Riverbend subdivision was supposed to put up a quarter of a million dollars, which he never did. And we were forced, when we disuncis number four, to put in Ashland. But then when we went for the money at Greco Title, the money was gone. So Riverbend subdivision has been enjoying this outlet all the way to Prentice without any money being paid to us for our work. We also picked up all their drainage, which was part of the condition of Riverbend. We also picked up the drainage of approximately 330 lots, which was spread over only 44 lots, which cost millions of dollars extra. But we bore with it back then because we thought we could economically overcome it. But as you know, it was almost impossible because 44 lots were given the burden of 350 lots. So we had to solve the problems of 350 lots, which we did. But because there was no money, the developer of Riverbend never, I don't know if he did or if he pulled the money before we got to the title company, but there was no money at the time, and we never got paid for the efforts of fixing Riverbend. Even said that, we're willing to ask any questions. We're willing to work with the township. We already have a DEQ walk we did defining where the wetlands are. We will not be interfering with very much of them if we do one or the other. But if we go to multiple type, we will not even touch them. So therefore, a lot of the legwork has been done to go to site plan. But at the present time, we're not asking for that. We're asking just for the rezoning to comport to the township or master plan. This is a, to agree to what you have purported that you want on that site. And here it is. And if anybody wants to see it, it's here. This is the master plan of the township, which indicates the, that that piece should be rezoned to RM1. If anybody wants to see it, it's right here. So we're only here to abide by your rules.
Anything additional that you want to share?
I would ask any other question you might have of us. We're just trying to work with you guys the best we can.
Any questions from the commissioners to the applicant while he is present at the podium? So we'll ask you to take a seat, please, and pay.
If you want us to sit here?
Wherever you're comfortable to take notes. I'm going to ask you to pay attention to all of the comments that are made. And again, we're asking everyone to be respectful. Yep, wherever you're comfortable, sir. Yep, wherever you're comfortable. And again, three-minute, three-minute limit, and if something is already mentioned, please, you don't need to mention it again because we are, we are taking notes. So with that, why don't we go ahead and open this up to the public? So when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address, and then the three minutes will begin. Ready for that timer?
Okay. Yep. Timer's ready. I got it. Okay.
Ready to say go?
Are you ready? All right. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Eric Skikovich. I live at 39036 Rivercrest. I am at the corner of Rivercrest and Ashland, directly across the street from the proposed development. Based on everything I've heard, a rezoning is not necessary for what the developer is planning to do. They want to put in, they say they want to put in, single-family residences. They can do that. The fact that they're asking for a rezoning tells me and should tell you what they are really seeking to do. I oppose a rezoning. It's not compatible with the surrounding residential, single-family neighborhoods. It's not consistent with the township character, what we're looking to maintain, what visitors to Harrison Township in Metro Beach see as they enter the township. I'm concerned about the traffic on the roads. Columbia, Rivercrest are going to become major thoroughfares for access to South River Road. Ashland is already a racetrack. It's going to get worse, and there's going to be more potential for accidents with a multi-residential family development in that area. Speaking of infrastructure, due to the recent water main breaks, we're already having water pressure issues. Water is having to be rerouted because the water department's waiting on parts to make the repairs they need to do. That's fine. But if we had this development in on top of this, imposing water consumption, it would be even lower. We're already at eight to 10% or eight to 10 PSI lower than norm. Prentice Point Apartments are a known hotspot by McComb County Sheriff deputies for crime. A multifamily development in that area is going to become another high potential spot for crime. Sheriff's deputies have told us this directly. From Prentice Point Apartments, this already spills into our neighborhoods. A month, two months ago, there was a young man who was arrested on Ashland, across the street from our house, for going into cars and mailboxes on Rivercrest and surrounding neighborhoods. A multifamily development is going to create the potential for more of this. We don't need this spilling over into our neighborhoods. I think it's going to have a negative impact on property values, and the township should be prepared for a drop in property taxes as a result of that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm Ron McGaughy. I live at 39079 Rivercrest. I'm within that 300-foot range from the proposed build site. A couple things, that's, one thing that really... A couple of things, that's one thing that really got me this evening, first thing was the, on the master plan. I mean, according to this, it's already changed, the multi, I mean, to what they want to build. I mean, no, yes, no. Well, according to that, that's what it looked like. But for that particular area, also looking at the tentative site plan that they have there, the ingress and egress, meaning the entrance and exit for this proposed site, everything pours onto Ashland. Why, why is nothing going onto Metro Parkway? I mean, I don't get it. From Prentice all the way down to North Point, that's a mile and a half stretch. That's the only two that access onto Metro Parkway. I mean, all these cars, like the gentleman was saying, Columbia and Rivercrest, they're all going to pour. If they want to go to the Mount Clemmons, they're going to be on Rivercrest or Columbia. And those two streets don't have sidewalks. So all those residents that want to go for a walk, enjoy a stroll or whatever, they're dodging cars all day long. You're talking about 88, so let's see, 88 to 146, that's the average, maybe 300, an additional 300 cars coming in and out of there onto Ashland, going in that direction or around to Prentice to Metro Parkway. That's huge. It's just a matter of time before somebody gets hit there. So please take that into consideration, the amount of density that's there. I've been there 30 years. I've seen that place grow from nothing to, go from zero to 60. I mean, it's very, very dense now. Used to be a beautiful semi-country type area and now it's dense. But it is what it is. I get the builder, I get his point, I understand what he's trying to do, good for him, you know, but I know investors that want to maybe double, triple the money. That's the cycle. That happens out there. But just please, think of the people there, the young families, the elderly, and the way they're going to have to live with all that traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Jakina. And as a resident of Harrison Township who lives on Ashland Avenue between the properties listed and North Point, I'm concerned over the potential rezoning. By allowing a rezoning, there would be a significant increase in motorized vehicle traffic in the area, potentially causing dangerous safety hazards to our community. Children of all ages play outside and there are numerous people out walking on Ashland. They should be able to play in the driveway, in the front yard of their house, and walk down the street on the sidewalk without concern. People of all ages race up and down Ashland at all hours of the day. Some are in cars while others are on dirt bikes, four-wheelers, golf carts and other forms of motorized vehicles. If you have driven their golf carts up driveways, onto sidewalks and front lawns, we have contacted the Macomb County Sheriff Department, Macomb County Department of Transportation and installed cameras on our property. The racing continues. Two weeks ago, a teenager was hit on his dirt bike. Bystanders raced to annihilate the woman who hit him. My camera was able to pick up this teen, that this teen was racing down Ashland and passed her on the wrong side of the road and was completely at fault. She couldn't have seen him coming until it was too late. I requested speed bumps, additional stop signs from the Macomb County Department of Transportation. They informed me education and neighborhood watch and HOAs are critical. We have a neighborhood watch and an HOA. At our HOA, that sends our continual reminders. My daughter is four, my son is three. We have educated them from day one on the importance of not going past the sidewalk without an adult. My neighbor's son is six and a half and autistic. He too has been educated. Two doors down, my neighbor has a four-year-old and they have educated her to stop for vehicles. Across the street, there are multiple neighbors educating their visiting grandchildren who range from seven months old to 10-plus years old. Where is the education for the teen racing on the wrong side of the road? Where is the education on the 50-year-old man racing down the road daily between 2:00 and 3:00 PM or the group of teens on golf carts driving out on the front lawn, nearly running over my kids? Rezoning would drastically increase the traffic on Ashland with potential to cause significant harm, fatalities into our children and adults. But to put the safety of our kids and pedestrians first, our community deserves it.
C. William Bardell, 37865 Point Rosa. The reason why I've been coming to all these meetings, board meetings and planning commission meetings, is exactly because of what's going on in this township. This here is a proposal. That area is indeed R1C, same as my neighborhood, Point Rosa subdivision. So this basic draft here is a slick willy going from a R1C to a RM2 and you want RM1. Well, both are wrong. It's a R1C so you can build single-family homes that fit the R1C. That's why I'm arguing, fighting against this draft. This is what's going on in this township and thank you people for coming out, but this is exactly why I don't miss any of these meetings. And I don't miss any board meetings either. It's the kind of, whatever, it's the kind of township that we want. We don't want to go backwards. We don't want higher density. We want less density. We don't want to lower the standard. We want to raise the standard. So that's why you see me here. Okay? And I may be on the wrong side of the aisle, but I'm going to keep fighting for the residents of this township to improve your quality of life. Even though I may not be in your political party, I'm still going to fight for you. And this is R1C and I'm against this draft to make it RM2 or RM1 and I'm against this project, make it single-family houses. We don't want the riffraff. We don't want rental properties. We've got enough multifamily. We don't want all the BS that goes with it. We want single-family houses. That's what we want. This is a family community, family-oriented, so that's why we moved here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Letitia O'Connor. I'm at 39134 Rivercrest. We're actually new to the area the past like year. I am going to be retiring from the military. I chose this neighborhood because I thought, single-family homes, we should stick with single-family homes. But coming to this neighborhood, the first six months, like there was someone trying to, you know, got pulled over, I mean, the police pulled that kid over, you know, selling stuff from our driveways. You know, I didn't come to this neighborhood for that, for the schooling. You want to put multifamily? Our classrooms are already extremely full. You're going to bring more children in. Right now, I would think, oh, I want to send my child to Lance Cruz Middle, Lance Cruz High School. At this point, I do not want to send my child there. It's because it's full, you're losing. I want better teachers. I want to come to something like that. But if you put multifamily homes in that, and he even said, because the other division didn't pay into it, he wants his money. If you do RM1, that's an awarding he's using, is, I'm going to get my money because the money didn't come to me. He's going to get it one way or another. And that's how, you know, big organization works. I'm in IT, that's what we do. We're like, oh, if I don't get my money this way, I'm going to get my money somehow, some way. And we cannot lose this Harrison Township. I came to this town, I like the community, I'm very new to this and including with Rivercrest, adding speed bumps, I'm asking about it. My two-year-old almost got hit, holding my hand because the people are flying through it. I know we've talked about, you said, don't talk about the traffic, but the traffic is horrible. My 15-year-old cannot walk to the bus in the morning or I have to watch her because people are driving by extremely fast. And I don't want to go into a neighborhood, I came from a big city to a town like this because I felt like, oh, it's a small network, people are going to watch out for each other. But living, coming from someone new, you know, with my eyes, you're losing your community if you do an open like this. And you don't want to lose your community. You want a strong community. But if you go out and bring everyone in, you're going to have that big town filling. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Templin. I live at 39023 Canterbury Drive. I'm at the corner of Canterbury and Ashland. My comment, which hasn't been brought up yet, is the condition of our roads. Ashland in front of my house is deteriorating and for the past several years, we've brought it up, that the pavement has cracked enough that every time it rains hard, we get water in front of our house and in the winter time, we get ice. The last several years, the light that's at our corner, someone has hit due to the retaining water that is not draining properly and that light fixture has been knocked over two or three times in the last five or six years. We currently, my daughter tries parking her car on the street and in the winter time, she's parking on a sheet of ice. My concern is that if we are putting that many more, 85 or more properties onto Ashland and there's no other way to get in or out, that our roads are only going to deteriorate more. And what's going to happen, because Canterbury is starting to have a problem, we've been calling Macomb County about that, Ashland is having a problem, and I'm just concerned that if we get that much more traffic and that much more weight on the road, that not only are we going to have a deteriorated road, but the pipes underneath are going to suffer from the change in ground and the change in load on those roads. That if we really are looking at putting in that much more dense, then we should not be having all that traffic going into single-family neighborhoods. It should be routed separately and we should have either close off part of Ashland or have a different routing for Prentice Apartments and other high-density properties because my daughter was one who saw that kid on the bike get hit by a vehicle as a new driver. Kids are running through there, there's all sorts of things happening and I'm very concerned about the additional traffic. And I'm kind of concerned that, I was surprised that the future plan shows that there is a zoning change on there because I don't remember being notified of a zoning change when we were talking about the future planning. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Timothy Barkovic. I live at 39801 South Point, Harrison Township. My concern, when I looked at the application of the applicant, was when asked why they wanted a rezoning, they indicated to facilitate a site plan. And I noted that there wasn't any firm site plan attached to the application. So ladies and gentlemen of the Board, we have no idea, although they're proposing that these condominiums be built, we have no idea, in light of their request to facilitate a site plan, what they intend to build on this property. It's my understanding that with the proposed rezoning that they're asking for, that in fact, apartments or multifamily residences can be built on this parcel of property. So what they're asking this Board to do is to proceed blindly, grant us a rezoning, and then we'll tell you what we intend to do with the property. And we, as consumers, as citizens, we don't walk into any situation blind and buy anything unseen. And they're asking, that's exactly what the petitioner is asking us to do, is to walk into a rezoning completely blind as to what they intend to do with the property. Now, I'm suspicious by my very nature. I walk by that property every day with my dogs. That property has been for sale for the last 10 years. There are two signs up all the time, for sale, for sale, for sale, for sale. I actually think that the petitioners, in this particular case, are attempting to get a rezoning to enhance the value of the property and then attempt to sell the property for a very large enhanced profit. And that's why they don't have a site plan attached to their application. Because they don't want to commit to this Board or to the citizens of this township exactly what they intend to do with the property. Now, like I said, ladies and gentlemen, I walk by there every day with my two dogs, Smokey the Bear and Dolly. And it's a beautiful, open, natural area. And I sympathize with the citizens who've come up before and spoken.
You could quickly finish up your time, ladies and gentlemen, please. Thank you.
About the traffic on Ashland Avenue. If, if they intend to build as many units as they say, the traffic on Ashland is already atrocious. Ashland is a residential street going all the way down to North Point. I can't, I can't imagine what a traffic nightmare it's going to be on Ashland Avenue if this Board grants a rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Barkovic. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
My name is Bradley Croker, 28793 Ashland. I live at the corner of Ashland and Colridge. I think, you know, obviously the petitioner in this case is discussing what the plans are now for this property. I bought into that neighborhood probably close to 10 years ago and I fully intend on staying in the neighborhood for, you know, hopefully many more years to come. And I think in situations like this, a rezoning might not have implications just for the petitioner today, but also for any use of that land that could happen 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, hopefully, you know, when I'm still living there. And it feels like that this is the gatekeeping method and, you know, perhaps by unlocking that gate now, even if the plan is, you know, has been described, that, you know, many decades from now, there won't be any gatekeeping left for that. And those of us that, you know, intend to stay there, may have to deal with the repercussions of the decisions that this Board makes for the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ann Howard Cotelfio. I live at 28784 Colridge Street. I live directly behind the proposed site that is going to be potentially rezoned to an RM1 or RM2 that could contain who knows what? Hospice, nursing home, convalescence home, senior center, worship, group home. I live in a single-family community on a really beautiful street with some beautiful homes in a great subdivision. And I oppose the rezoning. Our neighborhood already struggles with frequent power outages, poor road conditions, and I know some of these are duplicate, lack of water pressure, and we have excess standing water in many locations that are prone to flooding. Our backyard floods due to that property behind our house. We have phragmities, which are indicative of wetlands, and I do have photographs if anyone wants to see them. Adding high-density housing will only put more strain on our electrical system. I don't know how many times I've thought about adding a generator to my property because of the power situation. We can't handle the demand as well as it's going to contribute to a weaker water pressure, additional strain on our roads and invite even more standing water. When we bought our house back in 2006, we were aware that the land behind our house was partial wetlands and that there was the possibility that single-family homes could be built on that land. Now there is a request to change the zoning to multifamily, with the possibility of taller structures that may be able to look into the backs of our homes through our great room windows into our private area and our private space. I request that you please deny the rezoning request until infrastructure improvements are made and a full impact study is done for all to see. Please deny the rezoning requests because the current homes on Colridge are not designed for taller structures to exist behind them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kim Bostic. I live at 28834 Colridge Street. I am the fifth house from the corner and I back up onto the woods that used to be behind my house, that are now about half of what they used to be. When I, we're an original owner, when we chose that lot, it was deemed single-family homes behind us and I'm okay with that, but I want that promise to be kept. When I chose that, I, my expectation was someday, single-family homes, that's all I want. I do have another question. On this document, are they asking for two different? On this document, are they asking for two different things? One, to rezone, and one to take the existing R one C and add a residential clustering option? That's in this document that says similar to the residential open space development, but it will also include allow for attaching of units, because that's in red on this document.
We'll take the, we'll take the question down and answer at the end.
Okay. That's all. I oppose it. Thank you.
My name is Bob Bostic. I'm at two eight eight three four Colridge. That was my wife Kim that just spoke. I have a couple other concerns about the existing property that the board should look at as well. When Riverbend was built, they put a berm in the back to prevent water from coming into our houses. The property's been attempted to be sold many times. It has wetland in the middle. The Harrison Township uses it as water runoff on both sides. It has three and a half feet of water in it today with just the small rain. The board should really look at the property itself before they even allow single-family homes and what that would do to the area itself. I don't think, the property is almost three feet lower than all the other areas around it. It's continually filled with water. The middle part, as the developer just stated, is wetland. The Harrison Township uses both sides, so there's no access to it, for water runoff. We have a serious problem with water runoff and it's listed as number two on your sheet there. Again, I encourage you to look at the property. I just don't think it's suitable for even single-family. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is John Ebride. I live at two eight seven seven eight Colridge. We just moved in this year. One of the first things I noticed during a big rain, we're on the same street where our backyard has that berm and the other side is the, the woods is what we call it, but it's the area they're talking about. So we had a problem with our sump pump, I thought, right away. And I checked the storm drain to see why it was backed up. I had it water jetted, thinking there was a bunch of obstruction in the pipe, and then checked the catch basin, that's a shared basin that goes into the storm drain for just that side of the road. And the reason that we were backed up was because the storm basin and the storm drain was already backed up, just with the houses that are already there. So what happened was, it came up halfway up my pipe, there was no blockage, there's no blockage anywhere, it's just that the water level's already so high that the house is there, the water is actually about halfway up the drainpipe between the back of my property and the house. So it's getting close. I don't know what would happen if you added a bunch more stormwater, you know, coming on the other side. I had questions that, I don't know, I think he mentioned something about EQ, I'm assuming that's part of the environmental report. If it's not, my concern and question is, what type of expert and who is the agency that checks the environmental impact stated in number four? I'm not like a, I don't know. We've got a migratory bird area, that whole area behind us gets birds flocking in and migrating from as far as South America. We've got, obviously, some people think they're nuisance, but we've got deer, fox, coyote, rabbits, eagles that are all nesting back there. And to take twenty acres down to five, I'm not su, it just seems, maybe there's a report out there, but I'd be curious to see who was like, oh yeah, not a big deal to the environment. I'm not like a crazy hippie necessarily, but it is pretty. It's nice to have back there and everything's either just going to, I don't, I just am curious about that report. Also, the schools, somebody mentioned briefly, but I know that I've heard that the classroom sizes are around thirty or more right now. So I'm not sure what, what has to happen as far as the cooperation with the board and schooling and buses and addition, you know, you definitely would need at least a couple extra buses, times, you know, three. So you've got elementary, middle, and high school coming through. So those are just things I was thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Julian Klopacz, three nine three one one Rivercrest. Want to thank you, the board and my neighbors here for coming here. Only in America did we get to speak up, we didn't like something. That's why my mom brought me here, to the best country in the world, from Ukraine. And now I live, I feel like in the best township in Midwest, maybe all America, because like it's just so unique. You have a nice million-dollar home and next door you have somebody has chicken, eggs, and just, you know, nicely yipped up. But it's maybe it's not, it's not a million-dollar home. So I'm one of the neighbors that actually that gentleman went in, broke into the mailbox, and it is very true, it's dangerous to walk on, on our street, Rivercrest. Ashland is a speeding freeway. I'm against the proposed rezoning because I think we need to keep it a nice feel, township and focus on some of the concerns that my neighbors brought up here instead of allowing this. So thank you and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Anna Ebride. I live at two eight seven seven eight Colridge. Our home backs up to the proposed area of development. I have a few concerns. One, why would they need to rezone it if it's already zoned for single homes? If you're already able to do what you say you're going to do, why do you need rezoning? Two, we do have an issue already with schools. We have school-aged children, we have high school, middle school, and we just got out of Lobestal. As my husband did state, they are way over thirty per class, we're talking thirty-eight. My one daughter in middle school doesn't even have a desk because there's too many kids in the school. So if the proposed, if it goes through and they bring in all these homes, are we going to open another school? Because as I know it, we're, our school budget's, that's a whole nother subject. Our roads, our daughter's in a wheelchair and we live on Colridge and we like to go for walks. I am nervous, she's in middle school, I am, I should not be nervous for her to go out and enjoy her own neighborhood because of all the traffic from the apartments and those people do not look. It is wild. The other day, I went for a walk with my daughter, my teenage daughter, and we had a gentleman, I use that term loosely, making comments, sexual comments to us from the apartment. That is not a neighborhood that I just bought a home in to raise my children. It makes me feel unsafe. And bringing in all of these new, not single-family homes, that creates a lot, a lot more people. We have roads, we have flooding, we have schools, and like my husband stated, legally, because there is wetlands, you have to get the land surveyed. So I am interested to know who surveyed it, what was the actual outcome? None of those, I don't think, were provided. And I don't want to speak for all of our neighbors, but I grew up here in Harrison Township. I went to middle school south, I graduated from the high school, and we have had so much development. Harrison Township is losing the Harrison Township feel. I grew up here and it, we have, we have the best. We have the lake and we have nature. Now we're having apartments, tons of condos, parking lots. I mean, I'm great for, you know, I want us to keep thriving and everything, but we have to really think about what kind of community we want to live in. Do we want to be nervous for our kids to be able to go for walks? Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
No, you don't have to make it louder. Just, just let it know, watch it.
Jim McAndrews, two eight seven six eight Ashland Avenue. I just want to concur with all of my neighbors here that the request that you deny for all the reasons mentioned. And just by looking at your seven criteria for rezoning, I think you've got an issue with this plan from, with every one of them. So I'd ask that you consider that. And at the end, if you can also clarify, this master plan changed? It's going back and forth. I know we're not, can't answer and ask questions right now, but if you can clarify whether it's already, if that's the case, then why are we here, right? And as a reminder, from, I don't know, the two or three mile stretch on sixteen mile of road, there's a number of already multifamily homes from North Point all the way to Prentice. So another one would significantly increase everyone's concerns with all the things that were mentioned. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dana Posey. I live on Long Street. Not exactly close to this rebuilding, so I'm very nervous, but I have a lot to say. First, I want to say Harrison Township is not Shelby Township. We live here for the small-town feel, its charm, its beauty, its nature. I oppose the rezoning, I oppose all of the rezoning happening in that township. I don't understand how our, we're losing our wetlands. I think the thing we need to really focus on is, as many people mentioned, is infrastructure and aesthetics. I live on Long Street and at the end of our street, we have had a big, beautiful, open lot with deer, and now there's two big houses. The aesthetics is not at all matching the current housing. It's currently flooding out our, our street, there's no view, it's terrible to look at. It's just like a big muddy mess. I have pictures on my phone, it, they look very out of place. So I just wanted to speak up regarding the, all the new builds. It's not so much that, but mainly the aesthetics and infrastructure. I also don't understand how eighty-eight houses with six clear acres is going to be built on twenty acres. And that is it.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Stringer. I live at two eight zero four three Ashland. So we moved into our house in July of two thousand and twenty-four. We did know that the plot down the street was potentially going to get developed for single-family homes and we were okay with that. I grew up in Armada, so tranquility is not something I'm unfamiliar with. When we first moved, we moved to Roseville, so that was quite the culture shock. When we finally got, you know, little higher-paying jobs with, you know, our careers in education, we started looking and we found our house on Ashland. And when we drove up to the house, my wife literally said, this is it, we're getting this house, before we even went in. Then we went in and we said, oh yeah, we're definitely getting this house. And we fought tooth and nail, we actually switched realtors to get that house. And I don't want that to be for nothing. This was the happy medium of not being in the country and not really being in the city. You have the best of both worlds. I think multifamily homes would definitely destroy that aspect. I think it would actually hurt everyone's property values instead of help them. And I agree with what everyone said before, the water pressure is down, you know, the streets are terrible, it's a highway everywhere you go. Frankly, looking at the rezoning criteria, number five and six, I just don't see how multifamily homes would fit those. So, yeah, I, I don't think this should be passed to resident, or from, multi, or from single to multifamily. That's what I got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Been here an hour, so I'll be brief. My name's Brian Burbow, live at two eight seven one six Ashland Avenue. We've lived there for over twenty years. The traffic has increased exponentially, especially when they opened up that dead end, no question. You've heard a lot from people tonight, all of this is firsthand. I mean, there should be no doubt in your minds what the community thinks of this, but looking at your seven factors there, not a single one of those supports what the developer wants to do. They all contradict and say, you know, this shouldn't happen, number one, but number two, I'm really concerned about even eighty units of single-family. I don't know how this parcel's going to accommodate that, traffic-wise and everything else. So multifamily would be ridiculous, it shouldn't even be a consideration, but I'm in a lot of trouble seeing how, you know, squeezing single-family there in the neighborhood's going to accommodate it. So hopefully the board is taking into account everything people have said. I doubt anyone here is in support of it, other than the developer, and I get it, developers want to develop, but if we're going to follow the rules here and what's supposed to be suggested to the board ahead of you, there's just no way that this should be recommended or approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Thorp. I live at three eight eight seven zero Ryan Court. I agree with everything that all of these folks have said. However, my issue, which is black and white and as clear as can be, if you rezone this, you lose all control of what this developer does. He may say he's building singly, single-family homes, he may tell us a lot of things, but once it's rezoned, he'll do what he wants and there's nothing you can do about it because it's all within the zoning. So thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Skikovich, three nine zero three six Rivercrest. Live on the corner of Rivercrest and Ashland. Been there for over twenty years. Before Ashland was paved and have previous experience with this developer. In the pavement of the roadway that goes through, my driveway sits twenty-five feet from Ashland, which in violation of setbacks, somehow that was allowed. I already have problems pulling out of my driveway every single morning from people whipping around the corner at Ashland, which is a challenge, a safety issue. Safety issue with the properties there and obviously brought up many times with the speeders and the dirt bikes and everything. Adding to that would increase everyone's safety. When the roadway was put in, we were told that property there, there was a lot of wetlands there. I'm confused on what the developer brought up, that it is zoned already in the master plan from last year, that it's already RM one, but they're seeking a variant. So I think the township owes us residents an explanation of what's going on, how is it zoned, what's going on? I mean, that's, I'm confused here, starting off the meeting. This was sold to us as a park-like setting when the road was put in, which it is now. I am against all building there. The traffic with even eighty-eight units is going to be insane. Property values, everything on that list, like the last gentleman said, goes against what this, the development can even give us. Environmentally is another issue. So everything on there, I think you need to take into consideration and, and the residents are owed an explanation of this discrepancy on the zoning as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David O'Connor. I live at three nine one three four Rivercrest Avenue. One of my concerns with the proposed land use that is being brought up is the impact on our property values, the potential impact on our property values. Having bought my house under a year ago, I've seen a increase in my property value, but adding all these additional houses into the area, whether or not they are similar in design, spec, whatnot, of my house could potentially affect the value of the house. And the density of the houses on the road that is already being used as thoroughfare between Metro Parkway and South River Road is a big concern of mine. People speed constantly down those roads, there's kids on those roads, we have no sidewalks. It's a major concern to bring that many more cars up and down those roads on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to discuss anything that has not been brought forward yet? Any questions? Hi.
Hi, I'm Len Gallo. I'm, I used to live on Canterbury and recently moved from the street just, just about two or three weeks ago. And I've lived in the township for forty years probably and seen a lot of changes, which have to have, have to happen. But I can tell the board this, I vehemently oppose to any apartments being built in that, in that area. I can tell you as a Realtor, I'm a Realtor for thirty-five years, and there are buyers that do not want to buy homes. not want to buy homes near apartment buildings. Okay? So I can echo this fellow's concern about property value. If there's any more apartments coming into Harrison Township, we're going to start to look like East Point.
Thank you. This is your opportunity, because once we close the public hearing, this won't exist. So when we close the public hearing, it will be up to the, we will answer as many questions as we can. We'll have the applicant answer as many questions as they can, and then the board will take to discussion and perform our part. So, Mr. Bardell, you've already spoken.
Yeah, I can make one last point that wasn't discussed. Yeah, after this hearing, I'd like everyone to stick around because they're going to make some proposal zoning changes and give you a little slick willy. So I would stick around after this hearing, find out what they're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bardell. Yes, sir.
Hello. Hi. Dan Bolda. I live at 28070 Ashland, and I've been there probably 23 years. So I've seen all the changes as well. Concern of mine is traffic also, because the only way to get the 16-mile is either through Prentice or North Point, which is going to increase the volume substantially. The other problem, I live in a subdivision where it used to be wetlands. It was converted. We have rear drainage problems. So the township, say the engineering of the subdivision does not handle the water well. So increasing the density in those areas for the natural flow of the water, I think is going to be a problem for the rear drainage as well, because the pumping systems, I know were upgraded, but they still can't keep up with the water that is put out. You put more density in there, it's going to flood the, you know, I say the streets and the sewer system, make a bigger problem for that. And then again, with the speeding is ridiculous on Ashland. Once that was open, most people do not go out the Prentice way. They come down Ashland. It's a very long straightaway, and it is a speed, very long straightaway. People go very fast. It's very dangerous. And I'm opposed to the development as well. I think we have enough density in that area, and we need that natural area for the natural flow of the water to help mitigate that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Lee Weizenberger. Live on Onoculane. Just a real quick question that hadn't been brought up is, I see this was submitted by Emerald Green Properties LLC, which there doesn't seem to be a lot of information about publicly, but the spokesperson that spoke seems to be a representative from DNT Construction Company, and I'm just curious why that was submitted that way.
Okay. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion. Support.
Did you want to get up there? Okay. You're welcome. Mr. Duncan, Mr. Tomonello. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. I think it's wise that we address a couple of the questions right off the bat that repeatedly came up, and those are relative to the current zoning and the planned future zoning of the master plan. And Mr. Adam, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you are the expert in that. So if I could ask you to please explain the difference of where we are today and the potential of the master plan. And the difference between the two of them? Thank you. I heard a lot of people have questions about that. Yeah.
Yep. I think that several comments were made, like, has it been changed already? Has the zoning already been changed? The master plan does not make any changes to zoning or zoning districts. That's not done as part of a master planning process. The master plan has recommendations and things that the township may consider or look at into the, into the future. The master plan for this particular piece of property shows in the future for attached residential development, townhouse development, other lower-intensity forms. The master plan specifically says that conventional multiple family is not desired by the township, really throughout the township, including this piece of property and including anything shown on the master plan that is of that same attached residential townhouse character. So the master plan does not call for multiple, conventional multiple family on this property or other properties in the township in that regard. There is certainly, no change has been made. That's why the rezoning request is here before us. The applicant would like to see a change on their particular property. It's been brought forward by them on their initiative, not on our initiative.
Thank you. And so that, and so to be explicitly specific, no apartments?
That's correct. The master plan is explicit in saying about this category and other goals and strategies and policies elsewhere in the plan discouraging not wanting to see additional growth of conventional multiple residential apartments.
Thank you for that clarity. Isn't it true that the master plan can be thought of as a guide to development decisions?
Yes. And in fact, you know, I think a good illustration are the seven factors that we have. The master plan is one of seven factors that we consider if a property owner brings a request to the township to change a property. Similarly, if we would consider, the township does have the ability to rezone properties, certainly with notifications provided and all of that. That's not what's being proposed tonight. But the township also looks at these similar factors, would drill down deeper into the specifics about a particular piece of property. One of the things, too, about a master plan is it doesn't get into necessarily specifics about particular pieces of property. It's more of a general, broader, higher-level picture. So even if something is shown in the master plan for one thing, site-specific analysis and evaluation of the specific characteristics, community values, desires, interests, certainly are key factors that we would look at. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions that you want to bring forward before we dive into the list of questions the residents had? Mr. Tom?
No, I'm ready for the question.
Okay. Okay. Applicants, Mr. DiLorenzo and son. I hope you took good notes, because I did too, but they are scribbly. Okay.
I don't understand.
Well, wait till you get up to the microphone, please.
Well, we don't understand why your master plan clearly indicates a rezoning change in this parcel. Why did you do it? We didn't ask you to do it. You did this on your own. Is this a hoax to entice the state, to tell the state of Michigan that you have multiple when you don't? I don't understand it. Why do it? If you, you did it. We didn't ask you to do it. This was a master plan that you, sir, initiated and this planning board approved on the 24th in November of last year. We didn't do this. You did it. Secondly, on the idea of a wetland, we already had it walked by the Eagle people, and they've already indicated it, and we're not going to touch it. And if we do, we'll mitigate it within the rules of the state. The engineering will come later, and all these concerns about water pressure and everything will be addressed. There is a 24 or 36-inch line in front of that property, which serves the whole county, I mean, the whole, the whole of Harrison Township. The biggest pipe in Harrison Township sits on Ashland. So there's plenty of water. If they're having low water pressure, it has nothing to do with the fact that there's plenty of water to supply the site. Secondly, anything to do with drainage will be addressed, and we already, much retention area on both, both of those sides of Ashland, there's retention. So there's plenty of sites, and if there is not enough retention, we will create some, and there's open area to do that with. So therefore, all these engineering questions will be addressed at the time the site plan is considered. If it's not, then we have to go back to the drawing board to make sure everything works. That's why we hire engineers to do these kind of things. And any water problems that people might perceive to happen will disappear. The mere fact still remains that Ashland has yet to be dedicated, and many of the people right now that drive on Ashland have no right to be there, all of them, as a matter of fact. We have been very patient between me and my son. My son owns Emerald Creek, Emerald Greens, and I own DNT. So we just have a name change, but we are the same people. So therefore, that part of it, sir, we can answer that question easily. But as far as we're concerned, we're prepared to address all these questions these people have. And one of the questions they had, why not go into 16-mile road, Metro Beach? Because the Metropolitan Authority, which owns Metro Beach, will not allow any more taps on Metro Beach. You cannot tap Metro Beach. So we've had to increase the size of Ashland to an 86-foot collector's street in order to facilitate the subdivision of all those subdivisions that are there now, even though we never got paid for them. But that's why, that's why Ashland is an 86-foot right-of-way instead of a 60-foot right-of-way, because it became like a collector's street for the entire project, for all those subdivisions around there. We've had to provide road system there to collect for 315 lots, where we were only supposed to improve only 44 lots when we did Sunkus Number Four. But all said, that's all behind us, and we want to go forward. The fact that you put this on your master plan is your doing, not our doing. We're only comporting with your plan, and we are reducing the amount of capable amounts from 150 units down to 88 units, which under normal, we're only talking a couple of units more than we could put under R1C or R1D, which is, which is really close to R1C. So therefore, we're not asking for much, and we do have a site plan that we submitted, and we do have a wetland determination that was made by DEQ, which at the time was DEQ. Now it's Eagle, and they did it and certified with copies of that. We'd be willing to share them with anyone, and we are not going to touch it. But the rest of it is still usable land, and we feel we have the right to go forward based on what you've considered as, as an area of development under multiple. If you, if you had those concerns, you should have never put that on your master plan. You should have left it alone, but you didn't. You pointed that site to be multiple, RM1. We didn't do that. You did that, and this planner is responsible for it.
Chair Porter, can we seek our professionals here tonight on our board to answer this question, put it to rest? What is the legal standing of the zoning of this property as we speak right now?
Yes, Mr. Duncan. We can, we can take, do we want to take care of that right now?
It's legally zoned, R1C, single-family residential.
Okay.
And it has not changed.
It has not changed. I just wanted to make that clear.
It is currently R1C.
That is, that is true, sir, but the problem is that you're, you're, you are recommending in the plan that you have submitted to the state of Michigan that this be rezoned to RM1.
But presently, we're in R1C.
I understand.
And that's what, the point I'm trying to make, because you keep referencing that we have said something.
Yes.
Legal standing today, right now, R1C.
And we're going through the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Okay, so.
I have my turn.
I thank you for, for taking a few minutes.
And you are?
Stephen Coustra.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, as we're looking at the categories here, and I just wanted to bring up a few things. I think the master plan issue has been addressed by my client at length. With the master plan as it is, you know, these are the aspirations of the township. What's being requested today is kind of going in course with that, that plan. Whether, whether or not, and I know you're shaking your head, sir, but I mean, it wouldn't be on paper if it wasn't, and it wouldn't have been approved by either here or the board. If it wasn't, I'm not saying that you agree necessarily that it's not, that the zoning hasn't changed, but if you, if you shake your head that that's not an aspiration of the township, then I can't see why it would be on paper and filed with the state as, as a document that's supposed to be aspirational, as it was, as it was said by other members here. So just, just for that, I just want to make sure that that's understood. You know, I do believe that as, as proposed here, the site is compatible, and the reason why the site's compatible is because my client's been willing to make concessions as to how to, to deal with things like the environment, the wetlands, and other things. There's also the issues of the right-of-way of Ashland, which is still an open issue that, that could be a larger issue as, as things develop here. But there are certain portions of Ashland right now that, from what the public record seems to show, has not been completely dedicated. And so that right-of-way is, is in, in question. I mean, it's even on the sketch that was put there by the planner earlier, that shows that there's at least a certain portion of it that is not covered. It's that little dog leg that's there that actually goes to the other side of Ashland with regard to the property, as well as a strip of land that's along the right-of-way, about 20 feet, that's that red line, or that black line that goes all the way across. So these are some other issues, but within, with the site plan moving forward, that, that as proposed, will kind of take care of those issues. The idea with the, the issues of compatibility with the surrounding area, what's being proposed here is not multi-family. It was, it was, as, as the site plan shows, it shows that they're single-family homes. We have the pictures that were presented here. So to clarify any, any questions as to that, it seems as though the, the focus is to move forward in that direction. With the utilities and, and the streets, I understand that, you know, there are some concerns for safety and, and other things, including issues that are really a matter of just policing and are currently there now. I don't anticipate them changing. There was questions about people riding in illegal vehicles or vehicles that don't belong in the road. I mean, those are, those are problems that, that really are not affected one way or the other by a development here. That's, that's really a problem that, that should be addressed with the police. Also, when it comes to schools as well, I mean, the tax base will grow with the increase of, of a development. And so any concerns about overrun schools, one also is, is a schooling issue is, is a matter for the school board, but it will bring an increased tax revenue that will be able to fund the schools accordingly. Is there demand for use? I mean, I, I would say that as Harrison Township is a beautiful community, it is also a growing community, and there is a demand for certain use here, and the demand seems to be for single-family homes, which I believe was echoed by pretty much everybody. I think the real contention is whether or not it's going to be a multifamily versus a single-family. And I think that as it was, as it was presented and as it was stated, the idea would be to move toward building what's on that sketch, which is a single-family home development or separate families. So to the, to the extent that that, those issues are, were raised, I think that through the site plan phase and through those other issues, I mean, this is just the first step, right? There are plenty of other steps that, that would allow for the planning commission to address these issues as we move forward. The first is, is zoning, and, and the reason for the zoning, as it said, stated by my client, is one, because the master plan calls for it, and two, it's to, to fit the, the comportment of that 80, I believe it was 88 lots that were, were on, on the property or proposed to be developed on the property. And I think that that achieves the, the goals or the guidelines that, that you have for zoning changes or questions of zoning, in, in that it addresses all of them in a way that's not so impactful to the community, but also respects. the property rights of both all people, including my clients, who have had this property in their possession in one way or another for more than most of the other people, residents here have. I mean, this property has been around since, and I think it was stated earlier, over 35 years. So I think it's the last piece of property in a development that everybody here enjoys. And it's the last part of that development, but it's always been part of the plan. And every resident here, for the most part, has recognized that, that it was always slated to be development. Now, they have, there's different questions of quality and character, which I believe can be held in abeyance until a site plan comes in. But the idea of it being planned, everybody here knows that it's always been intended for development. And so does it fit, when it says, does it fit in the, is it comporting with the overall site and aesthetic of the township? I mean, it has been for 35 years. It's just time to start building. And I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to discuss them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
I do have a question. You keep mentioning, and I feel you're hiding behind semantics here, talking about RM1 and the vision in the future. We're presently here with an R1C. Explain to me, if you have R1C and you keep mentioning it's going to be a single-family residential development, why are we even talking about RM1? Why does that keep coming up as an issue when everything we've seen tonight is single-family? Almost everybody in this audience has said they are prepared to have that, I think minus one of the people that got up and spoke, he felt there should be nothing there. But why do we keep going back to this? You keep saying, a paper that went to the state, legally today, we're sitting here with an R1C. You can pull this off. Why are we talking RM1 tonight, is my question?
Well, the reason is that you've recommended it to begin with.
I'm not asking for why, what was recommended, because I didn't. I can tell you that, look at the paperwork.
Why are you asking for that, sir?
Why are you here tonight asking for RM1, when what you presented to us, you gave us documentation... Hold on a sec. You gave us documentation, beautiful home, I'm not going to say it's not, I think it's a nice-looking home, but you can pull off what you're asking for. It's already there. We don't even need to be holding this tight.
The difference is that this site, by leaving the center without being developed, under R1C would only give us about 45, 50 homes.
Okay, so now we're kind of getting there. Now we're kind of getting there.
Would compensate us for the money that we lost on building Ashland.
Okay, now, let's go back, let's go to the roads.
What we're saying right now is, if we're going to give you Ashland, because we still own Ashland...
Hold on a minute. You say Ashland. Hold on a second, please, people. You talk about Ashland. Who controls the roads in Harrison Township? Does Harrison Township control it or is Macomb County?
Macomb County, but they're not making a play for it.
So let's try to get under the fact that you've given Harrison Township...
We will do that. Next week, we'll have road, we will block off Ashland. All right.
So, and that's my question. You're kind of getting to the...
So Ashland will not be passable anymore. It will not be... All right, we'll do it.
Sir.
I'm set. Thank you.
So if I can, I just want to talk a little, I know you've mentioned a lot about master plan and discrepancies, according to you. And which we want to keep in mind is, we worked on the master plan for about 18 months, about a year and a half. This is probably my third master plan that we completed since I've been on the planning commission. When we talked about the master plan, we talked about themes. One of the themes that we talked about with residential input was, we did not, we felt that we were at our max breaking point with multi-family homes. We felt we had too many in the township. We are not, we do not have, you know, we have one ingress and egress, which is west. We're not in the middle of the state, but we have four ingress and egress routes. So that theme then became a guiding principle, right? So the guiding principle was to eliminate, basically, and you really can eliminate what's already there, but we didn't want to have any more multi-family homes. So again, and I know it is mentioned, but when, and I can tell you exactly, and I had communication with the planner, and that's right, because this property has been R1C for many years. And one of the things that the attorney said, he said, this is part of the plan. Well, the plan for the last 30 years has been R1C.
No, it was not, sir. It was high-rise. No, no. I beg to differ with your information. It has not been R1C.
I have the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So to me, that doesn't make it part of the plan.
The what?
Does not make it part of the plan. Okay? So the other thing, too, is, once we rezonate, if it's not a conditional zoning...
We can change that, sir. We can make a conditional zoning.
I'm not asking you to make a conditional. I'm just...
If that's your wish, we would do that.
People and the audience, so they can understand the way we do business. But again, when I had communication with the planner, about 50 homes can be built with R1C. He's proposed, well, he said we can build 150 with multiple. We're only going to do 88. So he's given us a great deal. But 50 is what it needs to be. And I think the majority of the people in this room, and you have the right to build on your property, right? You do. You own the property, you can build it. But I think the reasonable thing, and the way I look at it, is you need to build it as built. You know, I am not in favor of upzoning any single-family residential property in the township. I have not since 1990, when I started here, and I'm not, as long as I live, and serve here for the township. So... Does anybody else have anything to say?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm ready to make a motion. But go ahead, unless you have a motion, then you can go ahead. But go ahead and speak and then we'll take it from there.
Thanks, Larry. Yeah, so whenever we, as a planning commission, make a recommendation to the township board when we consider rezonings, we have to think about all the uses that are permitted by matter of right in the zone that we are considering recommending a change to. In the case of this property, I personally do not feel secure in making a recommendation to a greater density without some things such as a traffic study, without a drainage study, without a wetland delineation, and without an actual site plan to see how that increased density would affect not only the subject property, but the surrounding circulation. There are ways that one would do that if one owned the property in Harrison Township, where there were so many questions about how that change in zoning would affect the property and the neighboring property. And one would be a planned unit development, where you go through the site plan process at the same time as the zoning, so that those questions are answered, so that there aren't, well, what is going to happen if it's rezoned? This density, that would be unsustainable. The planned unit development process is perfect for a case like this, where these issues can be examined and a development impact study can be prepared and answer these questions. For me, I cannot support a zoning change because of all of these questions. And I would just like to advise that some of the issues that were brought up today by the audience have to do with the county. The county Public Works Department has to do with drainage. There's a county drain that runs through the property. If that county drain isn't working properly, then folks should call the county public works office. If there's catch basins on your public road that are not functioning, folks should call the county department of roads. And you should keep calling. They are busy, but you should keep calling and they will come and address it. And as Commissioner Duncan said, many of these issues are not township issues. The school district is not a township, local government issue. In general, school districts are very in favor of increased enrollment because they get funding for increased enrollment. But that would be something that would be examined through a development impact statement and a study that would go along with the planned unit development. So that's what I have to say on this. I will not be in support of it for those reasons.
Thank you. Anyone else have any additional, any other commissioners have any additional comment? Does the applicant have any questions to us?
Well, one of the questions I have is, and we're very confused at this end, why did you, if this was your wishes to keep it the same way as this gentleman has described, Mr. Tominallo, why did you put it in your master plan to change it? Why didn't you just leave it alone, like some of these other properties you have?
Well, it's...
Why indicate that this property should go in your master plan from R1C to RM1? Why didn't you just leave it alone? And we would have gone merrily, merrily down the road. The second thing I would like to say is that the road pattern and all the improvements will not be different. It would be the same road pattern if we built 50 lots or 88 lots, 88 sites. All the 88 sites do, make it more economically favorable for maybe a lower-end house, instead of a house that has to be brought in around $700,000 today's market to 550. And that's what we were looking for. But like everything else, it's a matter of a change that you suggested. We're trying to go along with you guys. And now we're being hammered, saying that we're the bad guys when we're going along with your master plan that you recorded and you suggested that that is what the intention of the township is. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. DeLorenzo.
Madam Chair, can I just say something?
Yes, please.
The other thing on the agenda is the proposed zoning amendments, which is a next step after a master plan, is to look at the zoning. The proposed zoning amendments still also keep this property R1C. So it's not changing legally to multi-family.
Anything other than?
Other than R1C. It's not even being considered.
Prentice Point Apartments are R1C on your little map up there. How'd that happen?
That's, it's a non-conforming use. It's certainly not pertinent to this rezoning request. It is true that the Prentice Point Apartments are presently zoned R1C.
Really? You're going through a process?
Yeah, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah. Prentice Point Apartments are zoned R1C presently. That's the legal zoning. So officially, the apartment complex is a non-conforming use.
Which occurs throughout the township, non-conforming use.
Yeah.
Yes. We have many.
From 100 years of zoning.
Yes. Yes. Okay, can we bring it back to the board? Any additional discussion? Any questions to the planner? Any questions to the applicant? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to deny case 1525RZ Emerald Green Properties LLC, 1712202009, and 171220226003, based on the following findings. Consistency with the master plan, the current adopted master plan designates the subject site for attached townhouse residential use. This future land use classification specifically states that this does not support the development of traditional multi-family complexes. While the RM1 district would allow the attached residential and townhouses use, it would also open the door for the establishment of a conventional multi-family apartment complex, which is not supported by the master plan. Number two, finding number two, and it's actually standard number two as well. Compatibility with physical characteristics of the site. The subject site features several natural features that should be preserved and which pose potential constraints to the development. These natural features include drains, wetlands, five-plus acres of wetlands. And rezoning to the RM1 district would allow for more intense uses. Number three, return on investment under current zoning. The subject site is presently zoned R1C district, which is designated to accommodate single-family residential uses. The applicant has indicated in the rezoning application that they intend to develop the site for single-family residential use. The applicant can receive a reasonable return on investment without the need to rezone the RM1 district. Number four, compatibility with the surrounding uses and zoning districts. The subject site adjoins single-family residential neighborhoods. To the west and north, higher intensity residential development may, would not be compatible with the surrounding uses. Number five, capacity of public services. The site is currently served by the public water and sewer, rainwater, surface draining, and are currently unsatisfactory. And although it would be identified engineering, currently cannot sustain the additional use. Number six, capacity of the street system. The subject site has existing access to Ashland Avenue, local street, although the site fronts Metropolitan Beach, a regional thoroughfare. It is unlikely, and we heard that, it is unlikely, Macomb would allow direct access to Metropolitan Parkway. It is unknown if Ashland Avenue has the capacity to accommodate the increased traffic that could generate by the uses allowed under the RM1 district. Seven, demand for uses under the requested zoning. The applicant has not provided specific information or evidence for the demand for the uses allowed under the RM1 district. The applicant has indicated on the rezoning application that their intended use is single-family residential. As noted earlier, a rezoning to the RM1 district is not needed to facilitate single-family residential use.
So motion by Mr. Tominallo to deny recommendation to the township board to rezoning these two parcels from R1C to RM1, based on the seven findings as listed and specifically listed in the planner's letter. Anything additional? May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Duncan, any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Member Tominallo.
Yes.
Member Duncan.
Yes.
Member Dublin.
Yes.
Member O'Parka?
Yes.
Chair Murray?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tominallo.
So I can smell it.
I'm sure sales side is going to be up.
May I please remind you, we still have business to attend to, so may I ask you to please exit and take your conversation outside? We would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
They'll, well, we don't know.
I know how much you're paying.
Yeah. Sounds like it would be happy.
Call this a night.
Yeah, right.
I'm not in the mood for any of that.
Well, once we do.
Is he open?
I don't want to go.
No.
I don't.
No.
I think they've heard a lot.
It's not going to happen.
Well, you know, he's probably going to take us to court and say that it's not a master plan.
Well, I kept on...
I guess we're taking a two-minute break.
Yeah, but you know, that's...
Thank you.
That's why it's a limited...
If you could please exit so we can continue with our township business. Thank you. Gentlemen, please take it outside. Thank you.
I'm doing good. I'm not done yet. You get to go home. I get to stay here.
You may.
Good.
You can if you want.
You really want to be bored.
Chair Murray?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking to make a motion to table E unfinished business, the E1 zoning amendments discussion.
I'll support. To the next meeting? Okay, we have a motion to table zoning amendment discussion. Do you want to table that to date specific, sir?
Next, maybe.
And do you want to table that because all seven commissioners are not present?
I would, that would be accurate.
As the responsible?
Yes.
Thing to do?
Yes.
So, next meeting day, please?
Next meeting is July 17th, 2025. Duncan and Dublin?
Yes.
Thank you. So, we have a motion to table zoning amendment discussion until July 17th, 2025, to allow all seven commissioners to be present, supported by Ms. Dublin. Any discussion?
Just to add to our discussion, we did have a public hearing.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Did we?
No.
In the beginning?
No, we're not at the.
No, yeah, these were just suggestions.
Okay.
This is all discussion. No public hearing has been held.
So, anybody who's interested in that, there will be a public hearing in the future on these, once they have been discussed by the entire board.
Oh, yeah.
That's true.
That's correct.
That has to happen.
So, just so that nobody thinks there's a slip lily.
We don't have to be on the 17th, which is a Thursday. It's not a Wednesday.
It's a Thursday.
It's always on a Thursday. We are on a Wednesday this month, because tomorrow is a federal holiday.
Okay, so we are still in a motion. Any, any additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business correspondence. Comments from the planner?
I have, just wanted to get you up to speed on the tech, tech committee that met earlier this month. We had two cases that we reviewed. The technical committee consists of the township engineer, building official, DPW director, township planner. And we review small, minor projects. In many cases, we also do kind of like informational discussion-only sessions for projects that might eventually come before the planning commission. So, we had two cases that occurred that were in that line, were discussion-only items. The first one was from Boat Town Liquor at 35550 Jefferson Avenue. They own the liquor store presently. They purchased the adjacent property that has an abandoned, but existing building on the property. They're looking at potentially combining the two existing into one by creating kind of a building in between. That would require some site improvements, more parking, some, a little bit of landscaping, upgrading their kind of continuous 100-foot-wide driveway to a single defined driveway. So, we went through a number of scenarios, talked about the site plan review process that they would need to go through, provided some advice and guidance to them, suggested that they reach out to both the road commission and the county drain commissioner as well, to seek some preliminary feedback on, on some of their proposals. So, that one may come before you in the future as a site plan for you. The second case was Lucas Marina. This is that existing marina that's at the end of Conger Bay, juts out into the lake there. So, I, I don't know if it's, it was a new owner. I guess I'm not sure, possibly a new owner. And they're just looking at, trying to explore what can be done. They're looking at, you know, can we expand or improve on the marina, or maybe could we add some, some residential as part of that development? It's a really unique property, really challenging. We did have a concept sketch presented to us for a PUD maybe two or three years ago. That didn't go anywhere other than some initial discussions. So, we provided some guidance to them as well. One of the big challenges is actually putting in a water main to serve that development, which would require, I think, boring under the channel to do so. So, that would be really costly. So, that was a discussion-only item. That obviously would come before the planning commission, before any approvals would be made.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the floor? Mr. Bardell, three minutes, please.
See you, William Bardell. 28-year resident, clean-cut, do-gooder boy next door. I urge everybody to please come back to the meeting on July 17th. I see everybody left, because that's when these proposed zoning changes are going to be talked about with a full board. Just give you an example, that property we just talked about, that property we just talked about, 2RM2, that guy wanted RM1. It's, it's R1C right now. So, this gives you an example, and that's why I totally didn't want to stick around, and I see everybody left. So, that's what I'm talking about. So, I hope everybody comes back on July 17th. And, I mean, this is ridiculous, and I don't know where to start. And I just hope everybody comes back on that date. And we turn this down, and we don't downgrade our township. Thank you for listening. I hope to see everybody July 17th back here on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bardell.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I address that?
Yes, please.
You're wrong. This property that was the subject of tonight's request is not shown on that, ma'am. It's being R12. After the meeting, I'd be glad to show you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Just to clarify again, that next week, next meeting will not be a public hearing.
That's correct.
No. It's still discussion among. It's discussion among us.
When it's ready for public hearing, the entire township will be notified publicly.
The newspaper.
In the newspaper and on every bulletin board around the township.
The website. And the website. Okay.
And Macomb Daily.
Any other comments? Any other public comments? Okay, may I, our next meeting is July 7th, 17th, 2025. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Mr. Tomonello, supported by?
I'll support.
Ms. Dublin. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So close. I know. The second time, second time today, I'm stuck in the pouring rain.
You're welcome.